Good evening, everyone, to our Village Board of Trustees meeting. Monday, August 5th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Will everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public, which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will everyone please remain standing for a moment of silence for all our veterans throughout the world who are there protecting our freedoms every day? Thank you very much. Roll call. Trustee Alpert.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Corrigan.
Present.
Trustee Osborne.
Present.
Trustee Hoag.
Present.
Upcoming meetings. We have a regular meeting scheduled for Monday, September 9th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. We have a regular meeting scheduled for Monday, October 7th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. This time, we're going to have a public hearing in about five minutes. So Fred Rella, would you mind coming up with your report now, please? Grant Brighter, please.
Good evening, Board. Hope you're enjoying the summer. I wanted to talk a little bit about Parking Lot A, which is the parking lot, which is at the corner of, or the intersection of Orange Avenue and Lafayette Avenue. And for those who are longtime residents of Suffolk, next to the old police station. We had a grant, we have a CD, Community Development Block grant of $200,000 for that repaving of that parking lot. And you might notice some cones in the parking lot right now. It's a sort of a two-phase project. The first phase is to improve the drainage within the parking lot. So that's being done right now, and it's substantially completed. But once the drainage is done, you then have to let it settle for about a month, okay? So the actual paving will begin probably sometime between September 1st, Labor Day, and September 15th. And then that also will include the striping as well. So I'm very happy with that. Charles has done a great job. That project is probably actually going to be coming in under what the anticipated cost was. So that's fantastic. And that's what I have tonight.
Can you tell us why, and how you picked a lot such as that, Fred? So people understand about the community grants and how it works, please? In case they don't know.
Yeah. Community Development Block grants have to be in a designated low to moderate income area of the municipality, okay? And that's determined by U.S. Census data. So it really varies from community to community. The low to moderate income level in the Village of Suffolk will be different than it is in the Village of Spring Valley, okay? So simply because you're in that area does not mean that you're of a much lower socioeconomic class, all right? And we only have one area in the Village of Suffolk that meets that criteria, and that is the West Ward. And then it goes across the tracks to Orange Avenue, and then up to Route 202, to basically where the cross-street apartments are, that area. So that's how we pick it. And the project has to be within that area.
Very good, Frank. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Fred.
Attorney, welcome the Fire Apparatus Committee here, who worked very hard on getting an apparatus for us. I'm just going to waste another minute here, because before that, I have a public hearing to do at 7:15. So if anybody wants to come up and sing a song, you're more than welcome. Jim, anything? Okay, so we won't do that. So I guess I'll just talk, I'll just jump onto the fire apparatus here. The fire apparatus, many hundreds of hours were spent by our committee appointed by our chiefs at the time, and the fire committee over there. And they looked at different types of rigs, and different, you know, different types of ladders. And after doing a lot of research, they came up with this, with the one that they will be voting on tonight. You have to vote on a bond first for that. And you know, I've given the public plenty of time to come up and make comments or emails, and I have to tell you, I haven't really got much response on it. We even worked with the fire department. We had a beautiful day, where they showed the equipment to the residents. And there were residents that came, and I think the residents of this community are very supportive of our fire department. And I think that's how I see it. They judge, they take our, the board's judgment, and the firefighters' judgment, and they respect it, okay? And it's, but we do have things changing in this community. We have bigger buildings coming, we have high buildings, we have residential buildings that are high. And I personally think it's a, we're not voting yet, but I personally think it's a good thing for the community, it's a needed thing, and I'm in full support. And you'll find out how this board feels in a minute or so here. But at this time, it's about 7:15, so what I want to do is I want a motion to open up a public hearing on a request from the Knowles and Ramapo Home and Association to change the name of Ramapo Cirque Boulevard within the confines of the Knowles of Ramapo. Mr. Phillips, would you like to come up, please, and then explain it? And then anyone have any comments on it, okay? I will point out that I did send this to the Building Department and our fire inspector, and they also recommended, and the firefighters, I'm sure, know about the confusion when you go to the, with the roads over there. So if you'd like, Mr. Phillips, go ahead.
Sure. Frank Phillips from the Law Offices of Phillips in Millman in Stony Point, New York. Our law firm has been representing the Knowles for over two years, 10 years, excuse me. And we did represent Ramapo Cirque for about two years. There has been confusion regarding both sides, when there is either someone trying to find Ramapo Cirque Boulevard, and they want to go to the Knowles side, which are separate condominiums that are separated by a fence and can't be traversed. They would enter into the Knowles and find out that they would, the Ramapo Cirque, excuse me, go through the gatehouse and find out they have to be on the other side, and then come back out. And it's happened the reverse over a period of time. We've had complaints from the residents of the Knowles, too, that we represent, and also from the board of the HOA and the Knowles. We did reach out to Michelle Marzella from Rockland County Fire and Emergency, and she thought it would be a good idea also, because the same road, as I indicated, is going through both condominium complexes, and has the same name, but cannot be traversed. So we're just respectfully requesting that this board, as the resolution, draft resolution has been made, that the name of Ramapo Cirque Boulevard, that's located within the confines of the Knowles, be changed to Knowles Boulevard. So then Ramapo Cirque condo will have Ramapo Cirque Boulevard, and the Knowles condo will have Knowles Boulevard. That's basically it.
Thank you very much, Attorney.
Thank you.
At this point, okay. At this point, I'd like to have a motion to open up the public hearing.
Motion, Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan. Second, please.
Trustee Osborne.
Second made by Trustee Osborne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Anyone have any comment on this specific issue at this time?
I actually have some questions, if that's okay, Mayor.
Sure.
So it was mentioned about the fence between the two developments. I feel personally that there ought to be a gate as opposed to a fence, a gate operated by the guard, perhaps on the other side by camera. I don't see why the two developments are separated by a fence, when in certain instances, there might be a reason to get quickly from one to the other by, you know, either the police, or the fire, or some other emergency services. And I'd like to understand better why there's a fence in the first place that's not traversable. That's for the attorney.
I don't have a, I don't have, two separate condominiums, that's all I know. They're, they're two separate site plans. That's what my understanding is, that the site plan is approved, have that fence. Besides that, I don't know.
So yeah, exactly what he was saying. I mean, we can ask the two condo associations if they would consider doing that, but we don't have the ability as the Board of Trustees to mandate that.
And it's a good question, but it's not relevant to the direct question we have here.
Yeah, I think we could have somebody ask the two associations, as I say, to consider doing that. But that's the extent of what you could do.
I will say, in the past, when Montebello Road was closed due to flooding, massive flooding at one point, we did, through the PD, speak to the Cirque, and they were gracious enough to open it up so people could get out and back. So they have done that. I think one of the issues was, Steve, just from my memory of working with them, when they left it open, it turned into a speedway, because it was just up and down, very, very long road. So not that we have to leave the light, but they have been good. Chief Lockman, someone from the fire chief, I don't know if they've had any dealings, but in the past, they have worked with us. That's some experience with dealing with them.
I believe there are speed bumps on the Knowles side, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
That would prevent the speedway that you're referring to, but I digress.
Anyone else have any comments on it? Being there's no more comments, can I please have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Trustee Osborne.
Motion made by Trustee Osborne. Second, please.
Second, Trustee.
Second made by Trustee Hoag. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. At this time, at this time, I want to, can I get a motion, please, for a resolution, change the name of Ramapo Cirque Boulevard within the confines of the Knowles, at Ramapo the Knowles Boulevard? Motion, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan. I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Albert.
Second made by Trustee Albert. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Have a good day.
Okay, the other item under the attorney's report is the Stormwater Maintenance Agreement and Performance Bond with respect to IV2 Logistics, which is the warehouse complex located on the former Navardis property. It's a standard agreement that is involved in any development of any size, commercial developments over an acre, that disturb any type of area in excess of one acre. So the agreement's been worked on between the planning board and the applicant. I've reviewed it, it satisfies all the requirements. And since it is an easement that goes to the village, the Board of Trustees is required to accept it as part of the condition.
Yeah, this is just, again, has to do with the Navardis and different things that we like to get guarantees and make sure work's done when the project's in, and when it's finished also. So they worked this out with Charles Awicki, our Building Department, and actually our attorney, Mr. Magrino, okay? So at this point, could I get a motion approving the stormwater maintenance agreement and performance bond, please? Motion, please?
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Motion made by Trustee Albert. Can I get a second, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Second made by Trustee Corrigan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. At this time, I'd like to have the treasurer, Mr. Janino, please. On the bond, bond resolution, Mr. Janino.
Yes, Mayor. As you mentioned earlier, coming up this evening is a resolution for adoption by the board involving the purchase of a fire ladder truck. The approximate cost of the ladder truck is $3 million, along with any kind of financing costs, and a little bit for contingency. We're looking to have the board authorize a bond resolution in the amount of $3.1 million. Of course, we don't borrow the money until we need it, and we only borrow as much as we need when we need it. So the fire truck, as I understand, the delivery is something like 1,400 days from the date of order. So the first thing that has to happen before you can authorize the purchase of the fire truck is to authorize the financing of it. And for that, we have the bond resolution prepared by our bond council for you. It has to be adopted by a roll call vote by at least four affirmative votes of the board.
Very good, Mr. Janino. I'm just going to read it. It's Resolution 2024, Bond Resolution, Village of Suffolk, New York, adopted August 5th, 2024, authorizing issuance of bonds in a principal amount not exceeding $3,100,000 to finance the acquisition of a fire truck, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $3,100,000, and appropriating said amount for such purpose. Trustee Albert, please.
Yes.
Yes. Trustee, Deputy Mayor Megan Corrigan, please.
Yes.
Trustee Hoag.
Yes.
Trustee Osborne.
Yes.
Mayor Curly votes yes. Thank you very much. And we'll go to Fire Department, please. Chief, would you like to come up?
Good evening, Mayor and Village Board. First on the agenda, I guess, as a continuance of the approval of the bond, I'm asking for the Village Board and the mayor to authorize a purchase of the Seagrave Aerial Scope for
Can I please have a motion to authorize the purchase of a Seagrave Marata Custom 95-Foot Aerial Scope Quinn Fire Truck for $2,994,861? Motion, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan. Second, please?
Trustee Osborne.
Second made by Trustee Osborne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you. Sure, we'll get good use when it comes.
It will, trust me. Thank you. Second on the agenda is the application for new membership, Luke Carrow, as a new member of the Volunteer Host Company.
Can I have a motion accepting Luke Carrow as a new member in the Volunteer Host Company, number one, please? Motion, please?
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Motion made by Trustee Albert. Second, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Second made by Trustee Corrigan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And lastly on the agenda is permission for 19 Tanker and 1999 to take photos in Jersey City on September 11th. There's an area in which you can see the lights beaming where the trade centers were. And we post up the apparatus and we take photos. Our ceremony in the village will take precedent, of course. We will have, you know, apparatus and a crew for that as well, but they did request to take two trucks on that day.
Can I have a motion for permission for 19 Tanker and 19-99 to take photos in Jersey City on September 11th, 2024? Motion, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan. Second, please?
Second, Trustee Hoag.
Second made by Trustee Hoag. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Thank you for your hard work. Thank you for getting back to us. Thanks for answering us, okay? And I want to also mention Jeremy Crawford, he was the chief when he started also. You both are there, and the whole committee, we thank you very much for your work.
Thank you so much, everybody.
At this time, we will take the Police Department, please. Chief Lockman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Village Board members. In the month of July, the Police Department responded to 990 calls for service. I just have one item tonight I want to brief the board on regarding the Police Department's accreditation status. As I'm sure the board's aware, the Police Department is an accredited agency under the New York State Division of Criminal Justice's Law Enforcement Agency Accreditation Program. We first attained accreditation status in 2009 under a former Chief Osborne, and have maintained that status ever since. It should be noted that only about 29% of the 540 police departments in New York State have been able to attain accreditation under this program. The Law Enforcement Agency Accreditation Program is designed to improve an agency's effectiveness, efficiency, and professionalism, and to promote training and foster public confidence in law enforcement. In order to become and maintain accreditation, agencies must meet a standard, meet a set of 110 standards in three categories: administrations, operations, and training. Accreditation provides formal recognition that an agency meets or exceeds the expectations of quality, demonstrates that an agency performs in a professional manner, and has formalized policies in place to govern its operational practices and procedures, and that its employees contribute to the agency's mission and know what's expected of them. Accredited agencies are reassessed every five years to ensure that they maintain compliance with the program's standards. Our department was last accredited in 2019 and is due for reassessment this year. In early September, accreditation program assessors will be on-site to evaluate our department's compliance with program standards. I am confident that we are in good shape for our evaluation, and that we will receive a recommendation from our assessors to the New York State Accreditation Council for reaccreditation for the upcoming five-year period. I would just like to make the board aware that our accreditation program is overseen by Lieutenant Martinez and assisted by Sergeant Samora and Adams, who act as assistant program managers. Although achieving and maintaining accreditation requires buy-in and effort from every member of the department, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize these three members for the extra effort and attention to detail that they put into this program. They've all done an excellent job in managing the program, and I have no doubt that their efforts will have us well-prepared for our upcoming evaluation. That's all I have, unless there's any questions.
What percentage did you say was accredited?
29% of about 540 police departments. I don't know what that number is. I would have to defer to Mr. Janino for that.
Come on, Mike. Do it in your head.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you.
Kathy, please. Home and Recreation, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Village Board. So we had a fabulous weekend here in the auditorium. Adams' family played on Friday night and on Saturday night, and in the theme of gloom and doom, it rained horrendously right before both performances. People came in and they were soaking wet, but they stayed, they loved it. We had a pretty full house Friday night, and a very decently full house on Saturday. So it was a great, great performance. And those curtains that were here for Clifford Theater will keep them up if you're okay with it. They look nice, they work, so might be a nice background for Village Board meetings. Summer concerts in the park finished this past week, last week. Reflections was the last concert of the summer season. It was a great evening. Suffolk Seniors were ramping up for the Suffolk Seniors picnic. This picnic is open to Village of Suffolk Seniors on Thursday, August 22nd, at 12:00 PM at the Community Center. We have, the Rob School of Music has asked to play a small concert over at the gazebo. It's a free concert, they're going to come over and have their students play. So that is at 6:00 PM on August 28th. So if you're around, you'd like to stop by, be a nice concert for, at the gazebo. I can't believe we're talking about the pool closing already, because the summer is flying. But Labor Day weekend on Monday, September 2nd, the pool will be closing for the season. But true to form, we're going to open back up on Saturday, September 7th, for the mayor's pool party. So that will be on Saturday, the 7th. So that will be our next, that'll be the finale of the season. And I think that is it.
Okay, just, we have a, we have a local restaurant called Fink's, they're going to do the barbecue for the seniors, you know? Keep the money local when we can, okay? So they're going to, they do a nice grill outside, we bring the food into them for the seniors. And it's a good time, you know, with dancing going on, and, you know, it's a scene, my tough time is keeping them off the chandeliers and dancing on the top of the tables, but otherwise, it's a great time, you know? Thank you very much, Kathy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
At this time, it's time for public comment. Can I have a motion, please, to open up the public comment period?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan. I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Albert.
Second made by Trustee Albert. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Anyone in the audience have anything to say? Feel free. Being there's no comments, can I have a motion, please, to call, close the public comment period, please?
Trustee Osborne.
Motion made by Trustee Osborne, second by Trustee Corrigan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Department of Public Works, Charles, please.
Good evening. Item A, requesting authorization for the mayor to sign the consent to assignment of contract to Interstate Waste Services, Inc., from Donato Marangi, Inc., for the refuse and recycling collection container service contract.
Okay, just to explain it, Donato Marangi is sold to Interstate, so they would take over those, all those contracts and those bid numbers as they are originally assigned. So a motion, please, to authorize the mayor Curly to sign the consent of assignment, please? Motion?
Trustee Osborne.
Motion made by Trustee Osborne. Second, please?
Second, Trustee Hoag.
Second made by Trustee Hoag. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Item B, requesting authorization to appoint Mr. Todd Strasberg to the Maintenance Mechanic One position.
Todd Strasberg has been working here for a good few years now, and he's very, he's very talented. He can do many different chores, and we're recognizing him for the great work he does. And at the same time, because there'll be two people being appointed, as well, Al Chamberlain, who's in the audience back there, okay? Works very hard. You have asked him to do anything, every time he says he's right there. And I respect, I respect all the workers, but I find it to be very helpful in this village, and I thank them. So can I please have a motion appointing Todd Strasberg to the Maintenance Mechanic One position, please?
Motion.
Motion made by Trustee Albert, seconded by Trustee Corrigan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And now I have a, Charles, I'm sorry.
Okay, item C would be requesting authorization to appoint Mr. Albert Chamberlain to the Maintenance Mechanic One position.
As I spoke about Al Chamberlain, he's a great guy, and he's a great worker, and we're lucky to have him. So I'd please have a motion appointing Al Chamberlain.
Trustee Corrigan.
Maintenance Mechanic One position. Motion made by, motion, trust, motion made by Trustee Corrigan. Second, please?
Second, Trustee Albert.
Second made by Trustee Albert. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Al.
Thanks, Al.
The treasurer again, Mike? We did a little different because of, you know, the bond and the fire, the fire service.
So Mayor, the first resolution we have before you is a, one of the sewer pump stations had to have some emergency repairs in the amount of about $30,000. We have the money in the contingent fund of the Sewer Fund, so we're asking you to, authorization to transfer $30,000 from the Sewer Fund contingency to the Sewer Fund wastewater contractual.
That was a project we had over in the West Ward by Duntry Court, you know, emergency repair, and it's done, and it worked out great, okay? And now I worked on that, too. Can I have a motion, please, amend the 2024, 2002 Sewer Fund budget for wastewater pump station repair? Motion, please?
Trustee Hoag.
Motion made by Trustee Hoag. Second, please?
Trustee Osborne.
Second made by Trustee Osborne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, the second resolution, Mayor, is a request to have the contract with Fred Rella, that's a grant writer, to be extended in one more year, from June 1st, 2024, to May 31st, 2025. This probably should have been on one of the earlier agendas, but somehow missed it. So we're asking it to be brought back to, from June 1st, 2024, to May 31st, 2025.
Very good. Fred is always there, whenever I call, works on his grants for us, and we appreciate his services. I have a motion, authorizing Fred Fred Rella to provide grant application services to Village of Suffolk. Please? Motion, please?
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Motion made by Trustee Albert. Second, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Second made by Trustee Corrigan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The third item is something that is involving our local service award program for firefighters, in that every so often, we are requested to review and approve the investment policy. The revised investment policy was submitted to us by RBC Wealth Management, which is the firm that is managing the fund's assets. And we recommend that this policy be adopted by the board.
Very good. Can I get a motion to approve the WOSAP investment policy, please? Motion, please? Motion, please?
Trustee Osborne.
Motion made by trustee Osborne, second, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Second made by trustee Corrigan, all in favor? Any opposed, motion passes.
The next resolution involves FEMA projects, it's the Federal Emergency Management Agency, wherein they reimburse the village for damages caused by storms and other disasters. You may all recall that back, I think it was in 2010, we had Hurricane Ida, caused quite a bit of damage, and actually now they're closing out many of the accounts. So FEMA has already provided us with funding for two of the projects, and we're awaiting another amount of funding for a third one. We want to establish a capital project to account for all of these monies, and therefore asking that we be authorized to create the capital project 2024-008, FEMA Disaster Recovery.
Have a motion to establish project 2004-008, FEMA Disaster Recovery, please? Motion, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan, second, please?
Second trustee.
Second made by trustee Hoag, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
The next resolution involves something that was brought up, I believe, at the last board meeting wherein the village was, the village board wants to have some events that will build community spirit in Suffolk. The local law was passed a few board meetings ago, whereas we said we would put some money together in order to finance it. Well, we had, as we know, some extra money that came in from pro-rata taxes. We're recommending, and we moved that to the contingent account. We're recommending that we move $100,000 from the contingent account to an account that would be kept for these funds and for the spending of these funds. And at the end of the year, if there's any money left over, we can always commit that amount that's left over for a future year.
Thank you, Mr. Janino. Can I have a motion to transfer a general fund contingent account to mayor contractual for community events account? Motion, please? Motion made by trustee Corrigan, second, please? Second made by trustee Osborne, any opposed? Motion passes.
And the last one involves the fire ladder truck. Now that we've authorized the bond and authorized the purchase, we want to create the capital project to keep track of all of this, so we're asking you to authorize the establishment of project 2025-003 Fire Ladder Truck.
I have a motion to establish project 2025-003 Fire Ladder Truck, motion, please?
Motion trustee.
Motion made by trustee Albert, second, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Second made by trustee Corrigan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Janino.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't have any need for executive session, is anyone else?
Yeah.
No? Okay. The trustees have anything they'd like to say?
So mayor, I think you might have skipped the approval of the July 8th.
I did, I did, I'm going to come at the end, yes. She already, Melissa already circled it from here, I'm going to come back to that in my mayor section, all right? Okay, at this point, I want to, a motion confirming the appointment by me of Laura Flaherty to the position of clerk, the position of clerk for the Village of Suffolk, of the village clerk. Can I get a motion, please, on that?
Trustee Osborne.
Motion made by trustee Osborne, can I get a second, please?
Second trustee.
Second made by trustee Albert, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. At this time, I got one of our code enforcers, Randy Ortiz, to be, through the county, to become a temporary building inspector, you know, due to the untimely death of our building inspector, I needed someone else who could also review things and sign plans for us so we can move ahead. We have big projects on our plate right now, and we have to keep, we have to keep government moving, all right? So I'd like the county, again, the county already has approved them, so we're, the board's ready to go ahead, so can I please have a motion approving Randy Ortiz as the part-time building inspector?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan, I get a second, please?
Second trustee Hoag.
Second made by trustee Hoag, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And also a resolution in reference to reference to our assistant building inspector for Adam Gordon. I want to do a salary of assistant building inspector to raise it, a $5 raise, while he's doing this to an hourly salary of $43,000, $43.08.
Say, I want that job.
$43.08, just with the approval also of the union and approval also of the, of the village attorney's review, okay? So I get a motion for that, please?
Motion trustee.
Motion made by trustee Albert, can I get a second, please?
Trustee Osborne.
Second made by trustee Osborne, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. The building department is a very important facet of our government, and it's becoming more and more important as time goes on and our situation's going on, okay? I'm even, I'm going to sit down with this board members, I'll probably recommend another clerk to help out in the office so they can actually help code enforcers process the violations even, even quicker, so we can get them to court quicker and the whole system works better. So, because right now, it's when you have your, you have your, your court, you have your, your person in your, the office, the full-time person in the building department, and then she's on vacation, this and that, you can back things up, and I don't think there's any need to back things up with the concerns that we have, we have on our plate. So that's, that I'm discussing with this board, that's the personal thing for me, just to explain this board, this board has been nothing but supportive on any of those issues, building concerns, fire concerns, and safety concerns. So that was something we'll be looking to next week. Also, we'd be looking for an assistant fire inspector for the village, because the fire inspector will be working more on, you know, he's a very experienced guy in the, in the buildings department, and he works at another place also, and we just want to keep a full staff there so they can stay unsafe and keep our, keep our community safe, keep our first responders safe, and keep everyone safe. So that's kind of what we're, this board is looking at, okay? So can I please have a, we did it already, Adam Gordon, right? Okay. What, yeah, we did, okay. So at this time, I think we're good with that, just maybe, can I get a motion? Let's do, let me do my motion for approval of, of the July 8, 2024 Board of Trustees Meeting minutes, please? Motion, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan. You get a second, please?
Trustee Hoag.
Second made by trustee Hoag, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. At this point now, we had done the, the police union to fire, the only one left here was the police chief for his contract, all right? So I have a resolution regarding the salary and benefits for police chief Andy Lockren, okay? He hasn't had a contract since back from 2000, since the old one, 2021. So we'll stay in line with the lieutenants, okay? And we'll go ahead. So I please have a motion, resolution regarding salary and benefits for police chief Andrew Lockren, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan, I get a second, please?
Trustee Osborne.
Second made by trustee Albert, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, motion passes.
Last but not least.
You know, at this time, I guess we can close the meeting. Anyone have anything they want to say about anything, nothing?
No, I just have to say it's been a great summer, there's been so much going on in this horrible heat, and running between raindrops, and everybody that makes it work within this village, I truly greatly appreciate. And Kathy, you've been sweating it big time, so thank you as well.
At this time, can I have a motion to close the meeting, please?
Motion trustee.
Motion made by trustee Albert, I get a second, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Second made by trustee Corrigan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Thank you, folks, have a safe summer.